Good to stay in the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decisions. I'm coming. Okay, this is the July twentieth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of the Newton City Council. We have the minutes from the regular meeting of June the fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Before y'all, I entertain a motion. We adopt those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda are several items of appointments to boards and commission. The first one, Mr. Kretko, convention center authority.
Because I'd like to renominate Mrs. Frost.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate Ms. Frost for another term, a three-year term on the convention center authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. The next, Mr. DeBose.
Yes, Mrs. Barrett asked that she step down. I would like to nominate Mr. Doug Keys.
Second.
Motion is second. We nominate Doug Keys, the Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. The next, Mr. General, you said this was on our next agenda.
Next agenda, please, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next, Mr. Kretko, Cultural Arts Commission.
Yes, I'd like to renominate Mrs. Jessel.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate Brenda Jessel to this Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Mr. Schell is not here this evening. If we'll put that on our next agenda. Mr. Kretko, back to you with Keating and Beautiful.
Yes, I'd like to renominate Mr. Boyd.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate Mr. Boyd to the Keating and Beautiful Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item is the DDA recommendation. The city council consider ordinance amendment to allow retail alcohol license holders to host tasting events. And I'll call on Councilmember DeBose, who is chairman of the DDA.
Yes, this has been under discussion for the last year, but we just thought we needed to bring it to council. Several merchants in the downtown area have a wine tasting in conjunction with whatever the business is, whether it's an art gallery or a clothing store or something of that nature. And we just wanted to make it clear that it was permissible for them to do that. And so that's the purpose of this. Mr. Cletus would like to speak to it and maybe expand it, I think.
Yeah, we've had some conversations with some of you that spoke about the agenda today. Obviously, I would be supportive of the change. I think it is a practice that has been occurring. Mr. Sears and Mr. Craver and I have been following some of the other communities of how they've been regulating and permitting tastings or sampling, I guess you may want to say. But I would also fully support downtown. I think if you're going to consider it, I would like to maybe consider it as a citywide and not necessarily just downtown. You're going to have other salons and other places that are in actually part of other parts of town that are going to certainly probably desire to follow into the same regulation. I think it's only fair if you do it to do the entire citywide.
I would make that motion with the addition of that verbiage.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is second is to instruct staff to bring back an amendment to the ordinance to allow.
You don't have an ordinance in front of us tonight.
That's right. There's no ordinance. We're not voting on ordinance tonight. So, okay, everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening, city manager, three appointments to the retirement board. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, got all three appointments that have expired. And I need to nominate three individuals. If you'd like, I just give you all three names and you can send them in one motion.
Sure.
First, reappointment of Mr. Ray Norton, who is our public works director. A new appointment I'd like to put in consideration, our battalion chief, Mr. Damon Rossiter. And for our third appointment, this will be an interim appointment because we were currently searching for an HR director. But our HR director does serve as our pension secretary and needs to serve on this position once it's filled. But on an interim basis, Nanette Miller is serving, so I'd like to go ahead and put her in the position. So it'll be Nanette Miller, Damon Rossiter, and Ray Norton.
Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We accept the city manager's three appointments and recommendations to the retirement board. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. I don't have anything this evening. Under new business, this is public hearing, application for alcohol beverage licenses. It's a Crackle Barrel Old Country Store at five twenty seven Bullsborough Drive. This is a new business and this is for the sale of malt beverages and wine. I'll open a public hearing at this time and ask if anyone here would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Do we have a representative here tonight from Cracker Barrel?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here this evening. Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Is everything in order on the application? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Motion carried. The next, Mr. Cole, how are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'll open a public hearing at this time on the twenty twenty one update to the capital improvements elements, including the twenty twenty one update to the short-term work program.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I am here to inform the public of the city of Newton's completion and intent to adopt this update to the capital improvements element, CIE for short, of the twenty sixteen twenty thirty six comprehensive plan. This includes the short-term work program and to receive suggestions and comments on the proposed updates. All local governments that utilize an impact fee system like us must include CIEs in their comprehensive plans and update the CIE portion of their plan annually. The short-term work program is included as part of the CIE. Per the minimum standards of the planning process, all local governments must hold one public hearing prior to the transmittal of their updates. Official transmittal to the Three Rivers Regional Commission and DCA is planned to be requested at the August twenty fourth meeting. After review and approval of the CIE update by the RC and DCA, the council will be asked to officially adopt the CIE update. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on what you heard Mr. Cole just say, the update to the capital improvements element, including the twenty twenty one update to the short-term work program. Is anyone here that would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Cole, for the presentation. The next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration of directing staff to release requests for proposals for the abatement and demolition of facilities at fifty seventh East Broad. Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely. As you know, Mayor, council, the city recently acquired its property. We've been going through a lot of environmental diligence and began a master planning process. And as we're working through the master, thank you there, I appreciate. As we're working through the master planning process, this is a request that would authorize staff to prepare an RFP seeking proposals to perform the demolition of all structures with the exception of the facade of the original building and also soliciting proposals to abate the property, reading the property of the environmental issues that found during due diligence and thus the reason it was entered into the Brownfields program. Obviously, we do not, are not at the point where we have a proposal that would be after we release the RFP, review the proposals and bring them back to council for consideration. There are estimations of the abatement is going to be potentially in the seven to eight hundred thousand dollar range and probably that much and maybe a little more than that again for the demo. So we're looking at potentially a one point six to two million dollar proposal here, but we will not know that until we solicit those proposals and bring them back to this body for consideration, if you so desire.
Okay, this is a request to release documents for the RFP for abatement and demolition of fifty seventh East Broad. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Grant the request. Any questions or discussions?
I do. I have one question. I know that it says we're going to have to take down the historic building, the oldest building on it because it has some contamination under it.
The issue with the original building, yes, is where we identified, and you may see on the, I know it's certainly in your agenda, where we identify the soil contamination is directly under the foundation of the building, which would make, which would make abatement very, very, very costly and already very, very costly. We had some initial estimates, and this is back before the labor shortages, some of the material costs, that the price per square foot to remodel this building about two years ago was almost six hundred dollars a foot. So I think from a cost perspective, it's not feasible to try to attempt to save that, which is unfortunate because it is a very unique building. I do think in the demolition process, we need to be very selective as to how we demolish that building, saving certain timbers, saving certain artifacts, saving certain things out of the building to try to reuse them in the best way possible and not simply end up in the salvage yard.
You read my mind. That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Those instructions will be in the RFP.
Yeah, that's certainly what we would like to do. That's correct.
Okay, and a motion is second on the issue. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. This next item is a consideration of a resolution to amend the twenty twenty pay plan.
Yes, sir. We always consider the pay plan at the beginning of the year. We have had some mid-year changes that I would like to bring before this body for final ratification. There's particularly three I want to bring your attention to. Actually, after the tornado, we made a change where we separated the title of our city engineer and public works director. Now we have two different individuals, so we actually don't have a public works director and a city engineer. We also recently have hired an individual, will be starting next Monday, for a ARPA. That's the American Rescue Plan Program Manager. That was not in the pay plan. And we also did a modification where we separated our municipal court from our police department. We created a municipal court, a municipal clerk manager. So those are the three changes that have incorporated into the pay plan. The organizational structure shows where those individuals report. Two of those individuals report to myself with the ARPA manager reporting to the assistant manager, Mr. Craver, who's on the phone with us today. All of the changes, we ran reports, are within the allocations of the twenty 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 one budget because we've had other changes in the organization, so will not require any budget amendments.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution or adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. The next is consideration of an ordinance to amend section three dash twenty five, consumption and sales on public property and section three dash sixty seven, growlers of chapter three, alcohol beverages, code of ordinances. This is, Mr. Phillips?
Yes, sir. As you know, during COVID, we did some temporary emergency responsive responses to help assist our downtown businesses. And two of the items we implemented, number one was an open container district. Another item was allowing the growler industries to participate, business to participate in that carryout program. Those were temporary measures. Council extended them one time. We did discuss these items at our retreat. The temporary ordinance does end at the end of this month. If council so chooses to extend those and make them permanent, which that's what this ordinance would do, we certainly would need that consideration. Obviously, without a missing council member, we'll have a second reading if it surpasses.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second. We approve the ordinance as presented. Any discussion?
I have a quick thing. On the actual ordinance as written, if you go to your agenda on page forty five, which is page two of the ordinance, section five, I think it's a typo that needs to be corrected.
Yeah, I mentioned that to Mr. Sears.
Okay. It says section five says adoption of this ordinance does not create any additional right or benefit substantive. O procedural should be or procedural.
That's correct.
Correct that to or instead of o.
Thank you.
All right, exception noted. Still have a motion is second to adopt. Any discussion further?
Well, I do have one quick, one other question, and this is something that maybe Mr. Sears can address. It's from twelve noon to twelve midnight Saturday night. And I'm not sure about the law, the state laws, stuff like that. Does it end at eleven fifty nine? Because are we allowed to do it on Sunday at, starting at midnight? I don't want to have any conflict with state law or anything like that, the turnover between Saturday and Sunday, Sunday sales.
Of course, you're right. We've had this discussion about what times are what. But in this particular instance, actually, your ordinance says that serving establishments can stay open until two o'clock on Sunday morning. So, but what we've said here is that this is the way you did in the temporary, that you wanted people to stop walking around at twelve o'clock. So that's why we put the twelve o'clock.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sunday AM, Sunday is two AM.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. If you'll put that on the next agenda for the second final reading. The next is consideration of ordinance to regulate the sale of distilled spirits. And I know we've got some council members who have some questions. And since this is going to be on our next, we can't adopt this ordinance tonight anyway. So why don't we go ahead and run through whatever questions we might have quickly so staff will be able to address those? And then I'm not even going to call for a vote on it because there's no reason to really. Questions from council regarding this ordinance?
Yeah, I've got some. I was looking at it and the, I'm trying to figure out how the protections in neighborhoods work because it doesn't necessarily address not having these four liquor stores in neighborhoods. So I'm looking for some extra protections there for having them in neighborhoods. We have churches, a certain number of feet, schools, another certain number of feet, and then each other, a certain number of feet. But it doesn't address these establishments being in residential neighborhoods. And I would like us to put something in here that requires that these not be in neighborhoods.
Or a certain distance from housing at that time.
So I think that's the question that we need to give Mr. Sears to apply on course. Obviously, they are only permissible in certain zoning districts. Obviously, they're not permissible in a residential zoning district, and they're not permissible in certain community commercial districts. So I think the question you're asking, even though they may only be permissible in, say, a general commercial, what happens if that general commercial district is within a certain distance of a residential structure? So are you asking if we can also, on top of the zoning district, have a and a minimum distance from a residential?
Structure.
Structure.
Mr. Sears, do you think that's permissible? Something you need to research?
Oh, certainly you can establish whatever distances you want under the law with regard to the package stores and the still sales of distilled spirits. And what you've got to be careful about is defining what you're trying to go. Because in this particular instance, as we know, for example, on Perry Street, if you said that it couldn't be within a thousand feet of a residence, then you couldn't, you know, have a standalone because downtown, we've got residences everywhere in the commercial district, right? So if the idea is to separate it from a residential neighborhood that is, then, you know, then that could certainly be the case.
I think that you end up with some of these, these interesting situations in our downtown neighborhoods where zoning is grandfathered in for other things.
And I could just say, we had discussed this, you know, with Cletus and Haskow enough, is that the ordinance is really going to be self-determining in that issue? Because right now, you're only allowing three.
Four.
Four.
Four, and they have to be standalone.
Five thousand square feet.
And five thousand square feet minimum. So, you know, unless, so that's going to limit where they go. But if you want to be more protective, we can certainly come in. But then we have to determine, you know, we've got certain things already where we go to multifamily versus single-family residents. So we could, however you want to structure it, we can structure it that way.
You may want to be a little careful. For example, I know that the area probably around, then across the block of Ashley Park is probably going to be a hotspot for this. And I know that we have approved residential development in Ashley Park. So you may want to be careful on how that residential zone, single-family zone, because mixed-use developments are going to have residential as well. So, yeah. Are you thinking just single-family zoning or structures or?
I don't have the answer. If that's what you're asking for, I do not have the answer. I do have a concern. And I want staff to think about it and help us work through those concerns.
I agree. There's a couple areas. I mean, one in Chalk Level. There's a place there that they could easily have a liquor store there, and it's right there in the neighborhood. There's other areas at other ends of streets that are, but right up against residential areas. And so I share Ms. Cynthia's concern that being near residential, you know, we have three hundred feet from a church, five hundred feet from school. I'm not sure why.
That's state law.
Okay, but we can increase that? Okay. That's a concern of mine also. You know, if we're going to have that, let's think about, you know, you've got children in a church and you've got children in a school and you also have children in a residential area. So I would like staff to look at this closer.
Okay, any other issues other than distance?
Well, that was one of my issues also, just the concern, you know, that houses or not afford the same privileges as schools. The number of licenses, and this is something kind of bigger pictures, and we're not concerned with what the county or other municipalities are doing. But if every one does that, at some point, we're going to reach market saturation. Four licenses is quite a few. Maybe consider two or three, you know, kind of reducing that number from four. And the other thing is that last bullet up there, no person entity shall hold more than one license. I just want that very strongly and carefully crafted so that it's not one person having it in their name, somebody else, you know, and then putting it in a spouse's name or a child's name or some other part of the entity so that they actually control all the licenses or multiple licenses unduly.
I agree with that. I do want to bring up one situation. Obviously, our ordinance is crafted to say that no city official can hold an interest in such a license, and not only in this particular distilled package, but that's the way it's written in the rest of our alcohol licenses. And I can tell you that is being challenged around the state of Georgia right now. And I can tell you that is being challenged around the state of Georgia right now.
Now, a lot of different provisions have eliminated that.
They've eliminated that because they feel that it is discriminated against someone who owns a restaurant or some other establishment, and you're not discriminating against other professions that council members may hold. So, I would expect that provision may go away in your ordinance pretty soon.
Just one other.
And just to answer the question about the numbers of licenses, you can, you can set the licenses whatever you want to. We looked at several ordinances in, in Cletus, ten thousand residents. I mean, that was, that for every ten thousand residents, which seemed to be somewhat.
Large, most of them were five thousand.
Most of them were five thousand, but ten thousand was the note, that's the way we arrived at the proposal.
Yeah, on our research, we found two commonalities. Most of them would use one for five thousand was a very common approach. And the other approach was no limit at all. Those are the two approaches that we saw. So, our, our approach here forward is probably the most restrictive that I've seen so far. Unless, again, we can choose to do what we want, though. Obviously, at your, at your discretion, but that's just how we came to, to that general initial draft for you to consider.
One other final question. Is the, the minimum, minimum distilled spirits inventory value to three hundred thousand dollars? And I know, you know, to purchase property, build and all that stuff is expensive. Three hundred thousand dollars of floor inventory, is that adequate? Should it potentially be higher in order to keep out, again, I know it's well discussed?
Again, based upon what research we, we did and found examples in other community ordinances and try to find a number for starting purposes. Now, if you were to ask me what three hundred thousand dollars worth of inventory looks like, I, you know, I'm not in that industry, maybe hard for me to, to define that. Maybe we can do some research and try to get you some more information on what it looks like. Obviously, I, I think the intent was for license holders to be well-funded, financially strong, it's all and to operate a top-class business, and I think it was the intent of how it was written. Whether it should be three hundred, four hundred, two hundred, I, again, I'm just going back to some averages that I have found in some of the local ordinances to present you with a starting discussion point.
Okay, anything else, anyone? Okay, then during the next few weeks period, knowing that this is going to be on our next agenda, please don't hesitate to reach out to staff if you've got questions or concerns, anything comes up. The public too, if you've got any, any comments on this, it's on, it's in our agenda, please reach out to our staff from the public point of view with any comments or questions that you've got or concerns. Because this is, this is very important piece of legislation that we're going to put out in front of the public who have the, the right to vote on this if we voted, voted up. And so, this is, and this is what they would be adopting, so, when they voted yes or no, or not adopting. So, it's, it's, it's there for the public to comment, not just the council. So, welcome you to do that, thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is consideration of MEA contract approval purchase energy from a solar project. Mr. Jeff, Jeff Phillips is here this evening from Münner Utilities. Be happy to ask any questions. I know they went through an extensive evaluation process on this and determined, as late as yesterday, that they would, would want to move forward with this purchase from MEA on solar power. And it gives them a solar power option in their portfolio. And we appreciate them taking that, that environmental-friendly look at what MEA Power is providing to our communities across the state. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, I'll stop talking, y'all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes like sign, thank you very much. Okay, the next is a consideration of an update of the city of Newnan's code of ordinances in regard to adding two additional permissive codes as adopted and amended by the state of Georgia, DCA. Don, Mr. Phillips, have you got a comment or two on this and then?
I defer any comments or questions.
Mr. Stevenson is here this evening.
Bill Fisher with us tonight.
All right, Mr. Stevenson, any, any quick comments on this or council have any questions regarding this?
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes like sign, motion carried, thank you. If y'all, I think we'll need to put that on our next agenda. Under unfinished businesses, this is the second final reading of ordinance to amend the 2020 budget for special revenue funds. This is the second final reading, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt for second final reading, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, motion carried, thanks. The next item is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Coward County and the city of Newnan regarding master planning and potential redevelopment. Certain blocks of the east side of downtown Newnan. We had this on our agenda last time, we, we voted on three people being on this group going before the county. The county came back and said they can't have three. We knew that going in because it created a quorum for them. Did you hear about from Bob Blackburn?
I did not, I only talked to one of their appointees, Al Smith.
Okay, their, their two appointees are Bob Blackburn and Al Smith.
That's right.
Ms. Jenkins, I'll let you comment.
Um, yeah, I thought since the issue is their quorum and not ours, that maybe we could propose to them that they have two and we have three on that committee. Any binding thing would come back to us as a council and to them as a commission in the first place. So, my attempt to call them was to find out if they had any heartburn about it, but I have not been able to reach Mr. Blackburn. But I did reach Mr. Smith, who does not mind, but, you know, without that other input in, we have to figure out something.
So, my comment would be, didn't they reject the three? I mean, so.
They rejected three from them and three from us, is the issue.
Correct. But I would have to think that they probably thought that through as to two's, two's plenty from each side. I would, I would think that they would have the forethought to think that through. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is this an exercise in futility? Or would just kind of move forward as presented with back to the two? But that's just my thoughts. I, I know that I wanted to be on this committee, and I went bef, contacted the other council members and asked them, told them my desires. And I did that before the last council meeting, and I did it before this meeting. So, you know, I, I still have that strong desire to be on that committee, so.
I think we all, three of us that wanted to do this do. And, you know, this can be a, and this is up to the council, but I will offer that I have a set of skills in this area that are pretty unique. I have a degree in architecture, I have a lot of building experience, and I work for one of the third largest builder in the world. I mean, so it's up to council what you want to do, though.
You know, I, I can talk about my experience, fourteen years on the planning commission overseeing multiple changes, ten years as the chairman, and eighteen years on the city council, but. It seems clear to me, both you are extremely qualified for, for the position. The fact is, how, which one do you systematically select? And how do, how, what's, what's the right way, truthfully, to go about it? So, to me, it's not a matter of the qualifications, because clearly, I, I understand backgrounds and your background and, and so. I guess what I'm saying is, let's not make something bigger than what it really is. Just, we just need to move forward, quite frankly, and make a selection. And how we choose to do that, I guess I got to pump back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, considering what we've got here is a, is an impasse, what I'm going to do is withdraw and let Ms. Jenkins and, and Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Alexander serve on the committee. So, if you'll place those two names in front of the county, we'll do that. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of adopting section three policies and two resolutions associated with FI twenty twenty-one Community Housing Investment Program, commonly known CHIP. Grant award regarding program design, policies, procedures, homeowner eligibility, and rehab, rehab, rehabilitation, I'm sorry, that didn't come out right, standards. So, this is a consideration of adopting the two resolutions. Are there any questions?
I would have a, just a comment question. It's, you know, this is specifically for Chalk Level, but there's other areas that would also qualify for this in the future moving forward, not necessarily this time because we can't, including all those areas that would qualify for this. That's just my comment, you know, for moving forward in the future as we apply for these grants.
Okay. Still have two motions, two resolutions here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the resolutions as presented regarding the CHIP program, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes like sign, thank you very much. The next is a public hearing for the city of Newnan's comprehensive plan update twenty twenty-one through twenty forty-one, a second of two to be held. The full comp plan, again, for those of you who are in attendance, is on our website. We went through an extensive process to get here to this point, and we appreciate the hard work of staff to get us here, and we appreciate the input of all of our citizens, both the city of Newnan citizens and those who live in the county, to help us with developing this particular document. Cole, I agree with you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm here regarding the second required public hearing in relation to, excuse me, in relation to the development of the comprehensive plan. Per the minimum standards of the planning process, all local governments must hold two public hearings during this process. The first hearing was held on February ninth, twenty twenty-one. The purpose of this second public hearing is to brief community, excuse me, the community on the contents of the comprehensive plan twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty forty-one, including the included capital improvements element. It also provides an opportunity for residents to make final suggestions, additions or revisions, and for staff to notify the community of when the comprehensive plan will be submitted to the regional commission for review. Once public comments have been addressed, the comprehensive plan must be transmitted to the regional commission with a cover letter signed by the mayor. Official transmittal to the Three Rivers Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Community Affairs will be sought at the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. The anticipated adoption date by mayor and council is either for the first meeting in October or second meeting, that's the twelfth and twenty-sixth respectively, depending on when we are notified by the regional commission after transmittal. The adoption due date is October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I do want to emphasize, Mr. Mayor, that we can take in comments until we transmit the document, and that's part of what I want to discuss just for the next few moments. We are particularly proud of the effort that went into and the results of the public participation component. In January, we developed a strategy with the assistance of communications manager Ashley Copeland. These efforts includes email blast over seven hundred and sixty stakeholders, pop-up events for one-on-one interviews, a Zoom meeting, a dedicated website for the comp plan, which is still up and going at newnanplanning.org, and an interactive survey that was extremely vital. As a point of comparison, in twenty sixteen, we received sixty-eight total surveys. This year, we received over one thousand thirty-seven surveys. Now, of course, part of that is because we went interactive this go-around, so that's truly part of it, of the reason for the increase. But also, we were insisted by a steering committee that included Mr. DeBose that provided key insights regarding the needs and opportunities, goals and policies, and the future land use map. And I just want to take a few moments, if the mayor and council please, to go over a few of the features of the proposed future land use map, which you see on your screen. And I'll be glad to answer any questions as well. One of the goals was, and especially when talking with management, we wanted to get away from what we noticed was a trend in that we noticed our map was becoming a de facto zoning map. In other words, a zoning map will show what's residential, what's commercial, what's on the ground now, pretty much. Well, we noticed through the years, through the decades, our future land use map had become that to, to a degree. So, we wanted, we wanted this map, which is supposed to be over a twenty-year horizon, looking out, to truly be that, not showing, hey, this is a commercial site now, this is a residential, a house is there now. We want to show you and the public what we anticipate over twenty years. With that in mind, we have some new categories. And some are just, some are the same, of course, such as public and institutional and industrial. Those pretty much speak for themselves. But I want to go over just for a minute a few of the others. One is historic neighborhood, and you'll see on the map here kind of this blue color, it's a royal blue, all around downtown primarily. These are areas that primarily consist of historic residential homes on smaller lots with unique architectural character. Infield construction and redevelopment should be complementary with existing uses and structures within the neighborhood. However, some non-residential uses appropriately scaled may be appropriate. The next is built community, which is kind of the light green. And you'll see that is roughly surrounding the historic areas. We wanted to truly show things that were built in here, areas that have been developed with a variety of residential dwellings and even non-residential uses that provide goods and services to the surrounding neighborhoods. Future land uses within this area should closely mirror the built community as already established. So, it needs to kind of look like and feel like what's already around it in these areas, things going forward, proposals. Plan development, okay? These are areas, as you'll see, kind of the light blue, such as Summer Grove, Avery Park, et cetera, areas developed through master planning processes with specific densities and uses tied to an approved project plan. One of the new categories, emerging suburban, you'll see a, it's a purple. Emerging suburban, and you'll see the, there are the purple colors there kind of scattered in different places throughout the map as well. These are areas identified as low density, four units per acre or less, single-family residential development. So, as you'll see, as we go through these residential-related categories, the densities start kicking in here. Here again, emerging suburban being four units per acre or less, single-family, okay? One of the other new categories is emerging missing middle residential, which is this color here. And you'll see, like the other categories, kind of scattered about. Of course, one of our ongoing challenges is, as we are running out of land slowly, you start to see less and less vacant tracks to kind of fill stuff with. So, that's one of the issues we address as well is redevelopment, including development ideas. So, to talk a second about emerging missing middle residential, I think the name says it all, really. These are areas identified as medium-density residential between four and seven units per acre, and these are things we think we're kind of missing right now. Allowing for a variety of housing products, including single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage homes and small apartment buildings. Kind of that missing element that we feel would even help towards the affordable housing issue. Historic downtown, of course, we coined this phrase carefully, and you'll see, of course, the area there. And just to give you the exact definition, this is an area with a mixture of uses typical of a traditional downtown, including two but not limited to offices, shops, residences and civic uses. New construction in this area should reflect the character of the existing downtown. Here again, we wanted to make sure we got that point in there about the character matching what's there now. One of the new categories was business office. As you can see, the Bullsburg area, a lot of the areas that are developed with commercial, high-traffic areas, Temple Avenue as well. You kind of know when you're in these areas as you're driving around. These are places we saw, this is a category for land dedicated to non-industrial employment generators, including retail sales, office service and entertainment facilities. Uses are primarily located along major highways, thoroughfares and interstate corridors. One of the new categories as well is mixed use, which is the kind of pink color. You see some mixed use, and I want to point out, too, our steering committee had a large part in helping us label some of these vacant tracks for the council's approval eventually, hopefully. You see some of these vacant tracks, they slated as mixed use. So, what is that? Mixed use are areas that blend residential, commercial, cultural, institutional or entertainment uses that are physically and functionally integrated. Mixed use developments require a specific development plan, with emphasis being placed on creating a walkable community. Here again, we wanted to emphasize that these have to have a specific development plan attached to them as they are proposed to us. Just a few more to go, and I think one of the key, I'll really just touch on one more. The rest are, besides that one, is industrial, public and institutional and parks and rec. Those really haven't changed. The industrials areas are showing the industrial areas pretty much as well. areas pretty much, as well as the public and institutional, being the schools and post offices, et cetera, and the parks, rec, and conservation. For example, the union utilities property, the city parks, we labeled all the city parks as well. I wanted to touch a second in more depth about the redevelopment opportunity areas. This is one that we worked on tremendously, a tremendous amount of time, I should say, with management, and really defining these areas as well as the definition. So let's start with the definition of the redevelopment opportunity areas. Areas designed to spur additional growth by allowing disinvested areas to be repurposed as livable, economically productive centers for business and social activity. So from recent trail along Bullsborough Drive down towards the bypass, you see this area here as one, as well as down Greenville, the shopping center area at the edge of town on Temple, right here, kind of behind City Hall on First, some of these areas. These are areas that we want to focus redevelopment opportunities. For example, as some of these older shopping centers on Bullsborough look to transform, redevelop those with residential, commercial, possibly bring in some of these buildings closer to the road with enhanced landscaping. A lot of spillover effects would come from this as well. We think over time, these areas need to be improved, of course, but we think it'll just make these areas more special over time as we look to convert these older uses to new uses. To the extent we put them on a map as showing areas that we really want to target, and hopefully developers would see this potential as well, because of course, the development community would be very interested in some of these ideas, we believe. And I would be glad to answer any questions about any of this, and we look forward to talking more with the council and being here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Before I take questions, I would like to say to the council that I, again, appreciate staff's hard work and the community's input on this. The fact that we had over 1,000 responses is tremendous. We're not done yet, though.
No, sir.
And we're also not done yet on the council, from the council's perspective, because I'm going to ask the council to have a work session on this document, so that we are not sitting in a meeting like this to take, taking the small amount of time that we need to be able to step through this whole thing. So if you've got questions, I might suggest that we hold those until we do our work session. That meeting, of course, will be open to the public. We will hold it in the evening so that you can return here, be part of the conversation during that time. It'll be a work session, but also interactive, as this entire process has been interactive with our, excuse me, our community. So having said that, questions from council?
When do you propose the work?
Yeah. Now, this is a public hearing regarding this issue.
Yes, sir.
So the public is invited to speak now, if they would like to. You'll also be invited to come forward at our work session to speak. If you'd like to do that, although it won't be classified as a public hearing, I will allow people to come forward and speak at that time. So during a segment of the meeting. But is there anyone here tonight that would like to come speak before the council regarding the comprehensive use plan that will guide our city for the next 20 years? Okay. What I'm going to do then is close the public hearing at this time and ask Mr. Phillips to coordinate a date, if he will, by sending out an email to the council regarding a public hearing, and not a public hearing, but a work session with the council, where we will provide notice of the newspaper coverage and get the public back in here to help us do a work session. So be expecting that email and reply, and we'll get a date together. Okay. Next item on the agenda then. There's Mr. Murray up with a public hearing, another public hearing for this evening. This is 62 Murray Street. This is a resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray, how are you, sir?
Doing well. How are you, Mr. Mayor and Council?
Good.
Just as a recap, real quickly, this property was brought to your attention recently, did undergo severe damage through a house fire back in early, last year, early January of 2020. The cost to repair the structure does exceed 50% of the assessed value. The house has been vacant, and the building department feels like there is some sense of urgency, given where this property is located, very close to the new Link Trail and the new park that's, or the new renovations to the park in that area. The property has been sold, was sold last summer to ANC Renovations, and I believe Mr. Cawthorn is here tonight. Great. They did pull permits for some interior demolition and completed that. Unfortunately, there's not been any more progress on the house since. And I spoke with Mr. Cawthorn, and I believe he does have some plans for the property, and he's here tonight to address you and let you know what those plans are.
Mr. Cawthorn, if you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Cawthorn, and I am a managing partner of ANC Renovations. I have a few printouts just of what we plan to do with the structure. Sorry, I didn't print it out for everybody.
What's your timeline?
Over the next six to eight months, six to eight months, we plan to renovate it to, you know, completely, I guess, redone, a single-family dwelling. We have recently pulled a building permit and plan to get started with the major renovations in the next few weeks.
Okay. Mr. Cawthorn, what we generally do on these things is go ahead and adopt a resolution. I'm going to suggest 180 days, since it's a six-month period. And then what you do during that 180-day period is you provide, Mr. Murray, with a schedule of events that are going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how to do that during business?
Yes, sir. That'd be fine.
And during that period of time, he reports periodically back to us in a chart form.
Okay.
That tells us what milestones and benchmarks you're hitting along the way.
Okay.
So when we come up on 180 days and you're two days away from being complete, we say congratulations, and you move on, and we do too.
Okay.
Because that's what we want, is for the house to be renovated. But what we don't want and won't have is just stalling.
Yes, sir.
To be blunt with you.
Yes, sir.
So is there a motion to adopt 180 days?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. 180-day resolution, motion is second to adopt on 62 Murray Street. Is there any question?
Is the 180 days to reach completion on the project?
Well, it's a 180-day repair or demolish resolution.
Okay.
Like I said, you turn in your work schedule.
Yes, sir.
You're working along, and you're hitting your benchmarks, and you come up on the 175th day, and we've got a meeting the next week.
Okay.
And you're 20 days away from being complete.
Okay.
You come back to us, we give you an extension because you've been doing the work.
Okay.
As you said. So you're not going to be in jeopardy of moving along, investing your money, and us pulling the rug out.
Yes, sir.
That's not the way this works. We want the house renovated.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to, we want you in the neighborhood doing what you do.
That's fine. We've done several of these, and I just, I'm not sure I can get it all done in 180 days, but we're definitely going to be making the progress to get there.
The only way we can keep you on task is to have the date out there that says...
That's not a problem.
And us seeing, looking at your progress as you go along.
Okay.
So have a motion is second on 180-day resolution, repair or demolish.
We need to open the public hearing.
I did, I thought. I said another public hearing at the very beginning before Mr. Murray came up. No, I know I said that, because we've had so many tonight. So this is a public hearing. Okay, so I've got 180-day resolution. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue during the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, have a motion on the issue. Is, are there any discussion, comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. The next, I'm going to open a public hearing at this time on 29 Westgate Park Lane. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir. Just again, as a recap, this property was damaged in the spring of last year in a storm. Trees fell through the roof and severely damaged the property. The property has been sold a couple of times. It is our estimation that the cost to repair exceeds 50% of the appraised or the assessed value. We have been getting quite a number of complaints from the neighbors that live in that area, and it does need to be addressed. I did speak with the new owner, who just, just within the last few weeks, purchased the property, Kirsten Step. Is Ms. Step here? Great. And she is going to address council about what their plans are for the property moving forward.
All right. If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Step.
Good evening. Good evening.
Do you want me to tell you my plans?
Yes.
Plans for, okay.
Essentially, your timeline is what we're...
Okay. So we plan to demo and rebuild.
Okay.
Demolition within the next 30 days, 30, I would say, 30 to 45 days, and then completion of the rebuild within four months.
Okay. So in that situation, if we do a 60-day resolution to repair or demolish, once you have demolished the structure, the resolution simply goes away, and the land can sit there without something built on it. That's your situation, whether or not you can get a building permit to start or not, but the structure's gone.
Okay.
So I would suggest to council, based on Ms. Step's timeline, a 60-day resolution.
Make that motion?
Second.
Motion is second for six, I'm sorry, I've got to close the public hearing. Anyone, anyone, it's been a while since we've done these. So anyone else like to come forward to speak to the issue of 29 Westgate Park Lane? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, and you know the motion we have, and I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, council and mayor Brady.
Appreciate it very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening, under visitors, is a request from Union Junior Service League to host their annual countathon on the square Tuesday, November the 30th. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, I think is an off-agenda item. Is there a person here representing First Baptist Church? Hi. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kristy Finninger from First Baptist Preschool, kindergarten from the First Baptist Church. We would like to close Brown Street from Madison to Washington for our, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for our camp bunch of fun. We're having water day and little kids in the road, so we'd like to block that off.
What's the date on that?
April, August 5th.
Okay. And the reason they're off agenda is they missed the date for getting on the agenda, so we asked them to come this evening and make that request, and she's here. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much for being here this evening. This is the part of the agenda where I say, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and have anything off agenda this evening? Okay. No one come forward with any other off agenda items this evening? All right. Let's see. I believe that ends our agenda. The council have anything this evening?
Good.
Ms. Jenkins?
No.
Ms. Young?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.